Introduce ourselves, that would be great, so our constituents can see who's up here working for them. Thank you.
Jacqueline Panietto, I'm sorry, this is Leslie, I'm sorry, just jumped right out of here.
Leslie Hervey, Assistant to the Clerk.
Jacqueline Panietto, Clerk of the Board.
Alicia Reese, Vice, Vice President of the Hamilton County Commission.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Streathouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Thank you all so much. Stephanie Summer Dumas, President of the Board. We will get started. Our first order of business is always silent prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. Before we get started for the silent prayer, just ask that we continue to pray for the Americans that are continue to try to get out of Afghanistan, that we continue to think of them. And also, Police Chief of Sharonville, Steve Hanover, passed suddenly this past weekend, and so if we would keep him in our thoughts. I'm going to ask for a selfish prayer for my family, my youngest sister, and she's positive for COVID. Her husband is positive, and her baby child is positive, and there are some other young people in the, in the family, a couple of them. So if you could keep my family in prayer, I would appreciate it. So just a moment of prayer. Thank you. And if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a couple public comments. And one is for Muddy Creek. I would probably let you, MSD is here to speak, and maybe after you speak, I can, and maybe they'll get some of the answers that they need. So it's, and I just got a new one when I was standing, both of them are Muddy Creek. Okay. Let's see, Dr., she writes like a doctor, but I know who she is. Would you prefer to wait until they give their presentation? Okay, and also Robert Burner. Okay, would you prefer to wait also? Okay, so, okay, thank you. So before we move forward, can we approve the minutes of our last meeting? I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Ms. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Streathouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I really don't want our, I really would like to go out of order if we could, because I don't know, our residents are here to make a comment as it relates to Muddy Creek. Are, are you guys okay with moving forward with that first? So if you'd like to come forward and talk about it, I believe it's item four under MSD.
And I'm President, Madam Vice President, Commissioner Streathouse, good afternoon. I'm Jack Rennickamp with the Metropolitan Sewer District Greater Cincinnati, and I'm here to present to you for item four. And it's a legislative request concerning sanitary sewer seven zero nine six, Muddy Creek FEMA property acquisition and floodplain reconfiguration. And the current request before you today is to accept and approve a April thirtieth, twenty twenty one FEMA modification to the existing Hazard Mitigation Grant Agreement that the Board approved on March twenty five, twenty twenty one. And also, along with this approval, to approve and appropriate nine hundred and sixty one thousand dollars for what are considered supplemental funds, or GAAP assistance is the colloquial term, to assist MSD in acquiring, voluntarily acquiring up to thirty one properties in the project area, which is in both Green Township and Westwood, the neighborhood of Westwood in the city of Cincinnati, for the FEMA, for the Muddy Creek FEMA project. So just very quickly, a background to this to set the stage. As I indicated, the Board approved this project and its associated agreement with FEMA in, in March of this year. And the purpose of this project, as I indicated as well, is to voluntarily acquire thirty one properties to deal with, and for vacant properties between house numbers three, three, two, five, and five, six, seven, seven on Muddy Creek Road. And the purchased properties cannot be redeveloped, an important point, as part of the grant agreement, both at the federal and state level. But the purpose of the project is to mitigate some of the flooding conditions that have existed for some time within that area, as well as any sewer backups that have been created as a result of those flooding conditions. So in January of this year, FEMA had awarded a four point five million dollar Hazard Mitigation Grant for this project to go forward. MSD's local match share of that grant agreement was five hundred and seventy one thousand, four hundred and eighty five dollars and fifty cents. That was a similar shares for the state of Ohio, for Ohio EMA. What's before you today is because of a concern with the housing market. The housing market has been seriously impacted by a number of issues during this COVID pandemic. It has caused escalation in price, as well as what we have seen is potentially the inability to have an equivalent property that should property owners within the FEMA floodplain reconfiguration area decide to sell their homes, to have a similar valuation of property to, that they can acquire. And we're seeing, based upon a study that's included in the legislation, and it's a local study looking at what, what is available within the area. It's in Exhibit One to your legislation. We're seeing anywhere from a hundred dollars to twenty seven thousand, one hundred dollars as potentially the overage, or the amount that property owners would have to pay to acquire similar, same value of home, so as what, what we're valuing their home. MSD is performing those evaluations on a regular basis. We've already completed five. We're going to progress to the next ten. They're in a prioritization level. And we've also already acquired, or at least have a contract, it's not completed, with one property owner, that property owner being Mr. Buckner, who's here today. We're also looking at having at least two other property owners under contract within the next few months.
Okay.
So the request of, of this particular issue and this particular situation is to appropriate that additional nine hundred and sixty one thousand, which is on top of the five hundred and seventy one thousand, four hundred and eighty five dollars and fifty cents, for a total value of the MSD share to the project of one point five three two million. The, the information from the Ohio EMA and from FEMA has indicated that the cost, this, this GAAP assistance cost, again colloquially referred to, is one hundred percent the burden of the local community. It's not shared in any equivalent amount with, by the state or by the federal government. And currently, the, the match itself, or I'm sorry, the grant agreement itself is seventy five percent FEMA, twelve and a half percent, as I indicated, both, both MSD and Ohio EMA. We're happy to entertain any questions that you have.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions, Vice President Reese? Okay, Ms. Streathouse, thank you so much. And so you do have another item, we won't deal with that right now, but I would ask for Mr. Buckner, if he would like to come up. And you have two minutes, sir. Take your time. It's okay. Let me know when you're ready to come up, okay? All right, thank you. We'll, we'll move forward, and we will go back to public comments. Would you like to come up, Doctor?
When I worked at U.S. EPA, I did the risk analysis of viral infections and epidemics, and also when I worked at Niasch. And when the movies came from Kathmandu with people falling dead in Wuhan, I knew it was nonsense. Denmark had just abolished all the limitations, masks, vaccines, and lockdowns, and Sweden never had them. Just because somebody's infected with a virus doesn't mean that they get sick, or that they get very sick, or they die. And this whole thing had been hyperinflated through the media that likes to keep people in fear. Children are now forced to breathe through masks in, in, in the schools, which decreases their immune, immune system, and because it, it prevents breathing. So I wouldn't worry about this anymore. I was tested four times in this past year, always negative. And I don't take any precautions, because I know that my immune system is strong enough that whatever infection comes, I'll fight it. This virus is just slightly more dangerous than a regular flu. We don't announce every flu death, and usually people don't die unless they have some other reason. I came here only to thank Jacqueline Panietto for her work here, because I think she had suffered through all of us for a long time, and I, I wish her really a great retirement and enjoyable life. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So we'll move forward now to comments and motions, Vice President Reese.
Uh, yes, thank you. Just wanted to highlight that the five one three relief bus is out. And they were in Silverton earlier today, and along with Mayor John Smith. And it was interesting, because I was told one of the people had, we were supposed to get there at ten, and someone was waiting for the bus at eight AM. And the woman that was waiting is a grandmother and taking care of grandchildren, and had no idea about the kinship program. So she was there for rental assistance, and also for the shot. And while she was there, she told her story, because they ask you about, you know, what's going on with you. And they asked her, had she known about the kinship program, and she didn't, and so she was able to also get some help with the kinship program, which she was very appreciative of. So that was very, very positive, a great turnout in Gulf Manor. And this afternoon, the bus will be, I'm sorry, in Silverton, Silverton. Uh, this afternoon, the bus will be in Gulf Manor from one thirty to four thirty, so anybody's watching, and if you know someone who needs it, they'll be in Gulf Manor at sixty four fifty Wehe Road, and so you can go out there and meet up with the, with the bus. Also, while we are here in our meeting, I do want to acknowledge and congratulate Judge Wendy Cross, who right now is being sworn in with her ceremony at the courthouse, and she's our, one of our new coming please judges. So I do want to give her congratulations and well wishes as well. The last thing is, I did get a chance to talk to the, the group that is doing and leading the disparity study. And one of the things I did ask, they have a preliminary report that's going to be coming to us, I believe, in December. And I was asking them to also include, even though the final report won't be in until the middle of the, of next year, we're getting ready to do a budget, and I wanted to know are there elements that preliminarily they could recommend to us to maybe keep our eye on, that we may want to put some money aside, so that when the finals come back in the mid-year, we would have funding to get started. I think it's very important, every week, we're, we're voting on millions and millions of dollars. And we're told without a disparity study, we can't have inclusion. So we're basically voting with exclusion, and I'm very uncomfortable with continuing to vote. And people, we have businesses who pay taxes but cannot participate. So I know that that would be helpful, at least for me, to know from the preliminary, if there's some things that we should look out for, that we might want to put some funding to the side if necessary, so that when the final report comes back, if there's things that we can get going on, we could get going on it right away. Now, the disparity probably will come back as, from my experience at the city level and the state level, it usually comes back with a fifteen percent goal. That means eighty five percent of minority businesses won't participate, but there's a whole eighty five percent of businesses that can participate in other ways with our county. And I have asked them to look into that. We are one of the few, at least the only government entity that I've ever been involved in. I've been at the city and the state level that has a purchasing authority of a hundred thousand dollars, usually it's fifty thousand. And so there's a lot of room there that we could be doing some things through the administration. And I certainly have indicated that to the administration, and I know that they are looking at that as well. So just wanted to highlight that for those who may be watching and ask what's going on with this disparity. I think we've got to have a study, but at the same time, we can't wait. There are other things that we can do while we're waiting on that final study. And that study would deal with bigger, larger contracts, the millions in contracts, but not necessarily those under a hundred thousand dollars. There's areas we can make some impact. So I asked them to include that in their preliminary report, and also include what are the barriers, so that we can look at, start to look at our sales and prepare from a policy standpoint. So when the final is done, we can kind of move quickly to make sure people are included in the pipeline. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Streathouse.
Thank you, Madam President. I just do want to comment related to the disparity study, because I don't want to be, let it go and said that Robert Bell has been working for now a number of years to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to bid on projects and contracts with the county, and has created a bold list that is very helpful as we go out for different projects, to make sure that we are doing our best to try to be as inclusive as possible. But there's no question that the disparity study will take us to the next step, and so I'm very excited to have those conclusions myself. One, just one thing that, I, I did a couple of tours this past week related to people with disabilities, especially kids with disabilities. I went out to the zoo, and the zoo has done a lot to accommodate young people who visit their facility, but have issues related to sensory perception, or perhaps they're visually impaired, or, you know, a number of different things. And so they've gone to great lengths to accommodate these kids, and it was really remarkable, and pretty heartwarming really, to see all the strides that have made, been made at the zoo for kids that have special needs or disabilities. And then I took a tour of Glenwood Gardens yesterday, and they've done the same thing, and this is Hamilton County Parks. And so it's, I just want to say that it's very heartwarming when we have organizations, these leaders in our community making special accommodations for especially kids with special needs. It, it really, you know, without being directed or mandated to do it, they're doing it, and it's the right thing to do. And so I just want to give a big shout out, especially to those two organizations, as well as LAD, where I went a few weeks ago to, to visit one of their facilities. But we're making a lot of strides in this community related to people with special needs. And lastly, I just wanted to mention the presser. I know we're doing a press conference tomorrow related to the small business rollout. I'm pretty excited about it. And so I just wanted to remind folks that that rollout's coming. So at two o'clock in Reading tomorrow, we'll be standing together, announcing our third rollout for the small business assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple comments. We will be providing from the Board a memorial proclamation for the police chief that passed in Sharonville. So I wonder, the Board will all be signing that. In addition, we did get some business cards. You can't see them if you're watching from home, but five one three relief cards. And there were, and I have suggested that we need cards when we're out in the store, or church, or wherever we are on the street, to pass out to people about the assistance that the Board is providing. Sometimes it's hard to get a pen and a paper and all that, and to try to repeat over and over to people. So this relief card talks about small businesses and the resources available, employment, rental assistance, utility assistance. I, we got them yesterday, and I actually was in a store, advertised for them, and had about twenty five or so, and they went immediately. Should have taken more. But I learned a quick lesson from the cards. I should have known that, being a social worker. I said, do you need any help with utility? Where people are very prideful, and they don't want to tell people that they need help. So after the first one, I realized, you just say, if you know anybody who needs help, here's a card. And so people were asking me for more cards, and I luckily had some business cards as Commissioner, I gave those out, but I'll be carrying more. And I believe Bridge, we're probably going to be needing more, because people just were really excited, and also did not seem to even know that we were providing that service. So I just wanted to mention that. In addition, I went to an LPGA press conference. And it was an announcement for the LPGA, the Ladies Pro Golf Association is coming here September twenty twenty two. And it's the first time that they've been here in thirty years. So a lot of sports people wanting to come here, so that's really exciting. Krogers and PNG are supporting this. And lastly, I just wanted to say, as it relates to masks, mask work, vaccinations work, and if you happen to get sick or positive, that if you've been vaccinated, you will not get as sick. And so they do work, and we'll continue to say that. We continue to update our residents as far as the status of COVID nineteen in Hamilton County. It is going down slightly, so we're happy to hear that, but we will continue to keep you guys informed of all of those things that are going on as it relates to how Hamilton County is dealing with this epidemic. So Jeff Aludo, you're next, our Administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. And just a, a quick comment. So several comments about the disparity study, and I do appreciate it. I think all the Commission offices have been meeting for some information on, on the disparity study with our disparity study consultant. So I appreciate the, the Board's input on, on this, and to Vice President Reese's comment about some of the other things that can be, can be done before the study is, is completed. So we'll look at that as well, and the budget process that we have coming up now, to see if there's anything that we need to do a placeholder for, as well as the Board is aware sometimes what we'll do when we have things like that, where we know there might be a prospective need, we're just not quite sure, earmark something in the budget. So we might take a look at doing that, and we'll talk with our consultant about that. In addition, based upon the meetings that have occurred, I've scheduled a meeting with, with Robert and our consultant as well to talk about what some of those interim remedial measures typically are that they see that come out of the, out of these studies. So the, what are the long-term remedial actions that sometimes get put in place? And then determine, to Commissioner Reese's point, whether there's some things that we can act upon more in, in the near term as well. So once, once we have that information, we'll come back to the Board and have that discussion, see which way the Board would want to go with it. So appreciate the feedback on that.
Madam President, can I just tell, I, I do want to thank you for that, and I want to be clear, at least with my position, I don't want us, at least I won't be doing, saying we did a great job on disparity. And Robert Bell even admits to this, because that's why you're saying get a disparity study. So I don't want us, I don't, we're not at a point to say we've done a good job. And I'm saying that because I've been in the business side of things, I've seen, and then I heard from the businesses. They don't think we've done a good job, because they haven't been included, and our numbers don't say that we've done a good job. So I hope, at least I'm not going to say, I'm always going to be disagreeing with that point, that we've done a good job, we got Robert Bell. That's not it. Hiring Robert Bell is not getting minorities to get contracts, and that's what they are. They're businesses, their job is to get commerce, so they can pay taxes to us. And I do want to thank Jeff and the Administration, disparity study, that's baseline. We don't have, the city doesn't have one, they're getting ready to have another one, the state. It's unfortunate that the government requires these folks to have studies to be included, but the, but when it's time to pay taxes, they don't have to have no study to be paid taxes. So what we have is taxation without participation. So for me, I'm never going to say we're doing a good job when I see sixteen million dollars in the fourth quarter to fix up the stadiums. And only fourteen hundred went to minority businesses, zero to women-owned businesses. I would hope that we could get those numbers every quarter. We got the fourth quarter, first quarter is over. I like to see the first quarter. But I, I want to thank Jeff, because he acknowledges this as the Administration, and we're working on those things. But I won't be saying we're doing a good job when people are out here getting locked out. And even today, we got nine hundred and sixty one thousand, we voting on something, another thing, we voting on twelve, fifty four thousand. I mean, we're voting on a lot, and I think as a Board, we all are saying, hey, we want to have inclusion. But I just want to be clear, because I've been hearing from businesses, they don't like to hear that, we're doing a good job, we got a bold list. There's nothing bold about not getting a contract. So that's kind of where they're coming from. We're heading in the right direction with the disparity study. But as Commissioner Dumas even said, we want to try to step things up a little bit if we can, and I think that's what Jeff has said we're going to try to do. So that's where I'm coming from on this particular issue. So I thank you, Jeff, for that. And I want to thank the disparity folks for saying that they will also provide us with stuff in the midterm report that maybe we could start looking into, that are some low-hanging fruit, so we're not waiting for an entire year. So, thank you.
Madam President, may I just weigh in? So just by way of background, the, Robert Bell came on probably three or four years ago when we recognized we need to do better when it comes to inclusion. So we have an Office of Economic Inclusion. Madam President, you and I were here last year when we passed the resolution declaring racism a public health crisis in Hamilton County. And we have now added another person to that office to make sure that work continues and is done better. We have a bold list that is helpful when people are looking to contract and hire. But also in that resolution last year, we said we need to do a disparity study so that we can do better. I mean, I think we all recognize that we have taken some steps, but we need to do better, and the disparity study is the step to get us there. And so I think we do all agree that this is an important step. I'm, I'm confident that our numbers will go up once the study is released, and we have the tools we need to put things in. and we have the tools we need to put things in place to ensure that we get the numbers that we all desire. But I just want to, I'm not saying that our numbers are where they need to be. We wouldn't be doing a study if they were where we needed to be. But we, through Robert's Bell's works, we have created some relationships that were not there in the county. And I just say that there's, there's room for improvement. But I think collectively, we are working to make this a better county and make the opportunities more available for everybody in the county. Whether it's employment, purchasing, contracts, no matter what it is, we're all rowing in the same direction as we get this disparity study under our belts. Thank you.
Thank you. And since we're speaking about the disparity study, item seven deals with disparity study. And there's an adjustment, a $2.3 million adjustment. I just want to say that I understand the adjustment because additional departments have been added to take a closer look and that's understandable. But my expectation is not to get an adjustment every couple of three months of $2 million. So however they need to do it and fit in all the departments that they've decided to cover, that's great. No, I know that there may be some adjustment, but I will agree to this 2.3 million. But I just don't want to see it come in every couple of months. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam. And just very quickly, I know we're, I don't want to go out of order here. But on that item, the $2.3 million is the budget adjustment for all of budget adjustment 28. So that includes multiple things in terms of some grant dispersment, some engineer projects, et cetera. I think the amount specifically related to the, to the disparity study is $18,000 or $19,000, which goes above the initial contract amount for that. So the 2.3 million, you're correct, Madam President, is for the entire budget adjustment. I just wanted to clarify that the disparity study is, is a portion of that.
So I need to clarify also because I was on a panel as it relates to the disparity study, the first one they had. And it was indicated to me that additional adjustments are going to have to be made as they look into the study and what more, what other data they need to review. So I'm just saying, look forward thinking that I don't, just don't want adjustments to continue to come for this study.
Can I ask a question related to the 18,000?
You're, you're, you're awesome.
Sorry, can I ask a question related to the 18,000? To the administrator, is that the amount it's going to take to include MSD in the disparity study?
Yeah, so the actual amount for MSD, Madam President, Commissioner Drehouse, is for MSD specifically is I think around 49,000. The budget was set, I think at 500,000 for the disparity study. The contract came in under that. So when you add the additional amount for MSD, it takes you up to that 500,000 amount and then about $18,000 over. That, that amount would be reimbursed by MSD as well. So that, that's the, the nature of that budget.
Thank you.
Because initially MSD said they did not want to be involved because they were involved in the Cincinnati study.
Yeah.
And, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, Madam President, yeah, I think initially MSD kind of fell through the cracks a little bit where the city was doing their own study, county was doing its study. I think the county thought MSD might be proceeding with the city. City thought the same thing for the county. So I reached out, had a conversation with the city manager, maybe a month or so ago now. And, and she had agreed that because MSD is required to follow county procurement, that it just does make sense. So Robert, at that point, reached out to the leadership over at MSD and they indicated, yes, we'd very much like to participate in this. And since then, we've just been working on the contractual amendment.
And it's also important to note that the areas that are really important to this disparity study of the elected appointed prosecutor and auditor's office are not a part of this. They decided not to be involved in this. But I'm real happy because the engineer said, come on, come with it. So you were getting ready to say something, Jeff.
No, I, I think that was it on that. I can go further into my by leave, but I think that's all I had on that, Madam President. Unless there's another question.
I just want to reiterate again, I, I want to reiterate again that we've got to get to some action. I know that the disparity is a study and even, and there's nothing against Robert Bell. He can only go as far as when we can get to the action. So just wanted to reiterate that because that's a lot of feedback I'm hearing from businesses that are out there. So, and those were some good questions about the MSD and clarification so that people understand that as well. Because I believe the city is doing another, another disparity. And people might ask, why do we have two disparities? So I think that was a good explanation. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward.
Thank you, Madam President. So that concludes my, my comments. My by leave, I've got two by leave items today. The first one is by leave one. This is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and Ernst &amp; Young. This is an agreement with Ernst &amp; Young to provide facilitation services for our stakeholder groups relating to the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. Specifically under this, again, we talked a little bit about this on Tuesday, but specifically under the agreement, Ernst &amp; Young would be responsible for facilitating four sessions with each of the six groups that we have pulled together to discuss things like affordable, not just like, but the specific groups would be affordable housing, mental health, public health and community resiliency, workforce development, youth development and homeless prevention. So the general concept being that we have some short-term programs that we're rolling out, everything from small business assistance, which the board mentioned a little bit earlier. We're going to be rolling out another cadre of funds for that on, later on this month. We have mortgage assistance, which we'll be getting out in October. Nonprofit assistance scheduled to go out in November. We've got emergency rental assistance funds that we're getting out now. The, these six program areas were identified as areas where we needed to take a little bit more time to look at, not just what the problem was. Recall, we pulled together some stakeholder groups to do some problem identification, but specifically to identify solutions related to the, what are very complex and tractable problems in any community. Affordable housing, for instance, how, there's multiple ways to address that. Do we, do we put relatively more money into construction or rehab or down payment assistance? That type of thing. Same questions along with public health and mental health, et cetera. So the goal would be to kick these meetings off in late September. We would be taking these meetings through, probably through the, the, the balance of the calendar year with a recommendation to the board at that time or shortly after. The, in the meantime, as I said, we would continue to roll out short-term relief programs like small business assistance, rental assistance, et cetera. And so again, this was just the, the, the planning process and the broader strategic process that we had discussed rolling out to, to deal with some of these bigger picture issues. I understand from Tuesday's discussion that there were some questions just on the approach and how we're going about this. So I would, again, my recommendation is that we advance and move forward with this particular initiative. But at the same time, I don't want to let perfect be the enemy of the good here from a timing perspective, that there's some additional questions that the board has, if we need to hold the item until next week. I'm happy to do that as well. I want to make sure the, because this is such a substantive part of our ARPA plan, that the board's comfortable and understands the approach, et cetera. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I also want to thank Holly Christman for her work on this as well. Holly can't be with us today, probably watching virtually, but I wanted to thank her for her efforts on that. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions, Commissioners.
Thank you, Jeff. Allocation of money for Ernst &amp; Young, I'm sure it was in the resolution. Can you repeat that publicly?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, Commissioner. Yes, so this is a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into an agreement between the county, between the Board of County Commissioners, Hamilton County, Ohio, and Ernst &amp; Young. And this is for $124,630.
Thank you. And in addition, you read off a list of when the services that we're interested in, small business rental assistance, when the kickoff is going to be for those at listing. And maybe you've sent it to me, but if you can send that to me, what you just read, I would appreciate it. As you know, we have lots and lots of things to read. I don't remember those dates. But as it relates to resolution by leave one, really not in agreement with it, but I'm, I'm going to say yes to it. And when I say not in agreement with it, because I look at the dates of October, November, December for these groups to get together and, and look at the, the crust of the problem and how to remedy the problem and how to attack the problem. And I don't think it's that difficult. I know you have to have a strategic plan. I've done that all my life, but with people out there suffering, and I said this Tuesday and I will say it again today, I think it holds up things. You can't just go out willy-nilly giving out money. I know that, but you know, to meet in all these groups to figure out stuff we already know. I almost want to take a leave of absence and meet a facilitator. But anyway, I'm sure Ernst &amp; Young know what they're doing. But I will agree with this, but I just want us to hurry up, as I said Tuesday, and get the money out. And that would be obvious when we go to our press conference on Friday. There is a great map that Bridget brought up as relates to small businesses and those that have been helped. And I loved seeing that. And I just want to see that for every, everyone and every service that we're trying to provide. So I will open it up for Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. Do get, I do have a couple of questions. I see the Ernst &amp; Young team that's going to come out of Atlanta and Florida to lead these efforts, I believe, based on the packet I have. I'm going to take this out or they're going to get the mics for some reason. No, I was saying the team, from what I'm seeing on here, they're coming out of Atlanta and Florida to facilitate, I would assume by Zoom. Is that what we would be doing? Are they coming to town?
Madam President, Madam Vice President, yes. So there will, it'll be a combination likely. There will be some in-person. There will also be, in fact, we were talking about this a little bit earlier today. We are going to look at the prospect, especially because of where COVID is right now. We're going to have to be a little bit nimble. And there could very well be virtual meetings on this. The way the contract is set is it does allow the contract to be reduced if travel is not necessary, that type of thing. We were hoping when we were doing this, when we started putting this together, it was right at, at the downturn, when we were starting to see some significant reduction in the virus. And we were hoping to do as much of this as in-person as we possibly could just to have that in-person interaction between the facilitation group and the, and the stakeholders. But it just may not be possible given, given where we are with COVID. So we do have something built into the contract that if it is virtual, there would be a slight reduction in the, in the cost to eliminate travel.
Got you. Thank you. And just following up, we just had a, I don't know, 10-minute conversation about opportunities for contracts and disparities. And this is a professional service contract. Now on here, it has a waiver for SB, it says application for SB program waiver for goods and services. What is that?
I, I'll have to, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, Madam Vice President. So this is the, I don't know if I can get a copy of it.
Bridget, is there a way to turn up the microphones at all?
Either that or my mask is really doing, my, my Grambling State University mask is fighting off COVID strong.
Because we don't want other people to start doing it.
Yeah, Madam, Madam Vice President, so what this is, is simply, in a nutshell, what this is saying is that typically we ask vendors to look, we encourage strongly the use of subcontractors and things like that because of the nature of the turnaround here. This is Ernst &amp; Young, this is not Ernst &amp; Young and other subcontractors, et cetera. So they're saying that they typically, we ask them to meet a certain percentage of small business. That's our formal policy. As the board knows, we have a small business policy. We don't have, because we don't have the disparity study completed yet, an MBE or WBE policy. So this basically says that they're not able to meet a small business number because Ernst &amp; Young itself is not a small business. And it is simply Ernst &amp; Young providing the service in that case.
Got you. And they would be meeting with our local providers here. And I guess my other question is, you also have, is not on the agenda today, but you also have a recommendation for an equity consultant because the government wants to see what we're doing as relates to equity. Is there any way they can, is that, can that be combined into this contract? I mean.
Yeah, I think two very different, two very different scopes there. So this is relating to specifically the, the recommendation of programs regarding the ARP. The equity consultant would be an opportunity for, first of all, an opportunity for another firm. It would not be, most likely wouldn't be Ernst &amp; Young to help provide us with, the, the federal government under the ARP plan requires that communities put all of their programming through the lens of, of equity and diversity from the perspective of how your programs are reaching, how they're being advertised and how entities are made aware of the programs. So for everything we have to do, we're going to have to go back to the federal government and say, what process did we go through to make sure this was the case? And so we wanted to bring someone on to help us set that process up. So that, that's what the equity consultant would assist with. So the Ernst &amp; Young is less about procedural setup, less about compliance and more about idea generation and recommended programs.
And you know me, I'm always looking at, keep, trying to keep the money at home. Because if we, you know, so I'm just trying to figure out, to be honest, just trying to figure out this consulting component, what that's going to be. I don't want just someone on Zoom and they give us a report. Yeah, they got a good name for a company, but I mean, they're not paying any taxes back to us in Hamilton County. They don't know us as Hamilton County. I didn't know if there was anyone local that could lead something like this or why, why? Or, you know, tell me your reasoning why we went out of town.
Yeah, so this was part of a competitive procurement. I think there were eight submittals on this. I think the, the costs range anywhere from 60,000 to close to 200,000. Ernst &amp; Young was, was right in the middle. But I will tell you that the, the recommendation for Ernst &amp; Young came strongly from the, from the administration because, specifically because of their ability, not only to facilitate those groups. And we're going to be bringing together groups of industry leaders here local, locally, to talk about each one of these problems, whether it's affordable housing, mental health, public health, et cetera. So we needed a group that number one, had the bench strength to have expertise in all of these diverse areas, which is quite wide-ranging, everything from homelessness to youth, et cetera, as well as to help us from a national perspective with pulling best practices. We want to inject into these conversations best practices that are occurring with, within other communities so that we can start to expand the conversation a bit with this group. We, at this, in addition to that, while we have the, the best practice information coming to the table, we also want to make sure that we have the ability to dive in locally on the data as well, so as we come up with data. And to that point, and I should have mentioned, we also as a, we already had them on board. But to really assist with the data aspect of this and the data analysis, we are partnering with the UC Center for Economics. And they are going to be used along with Ernst &amp; Young to help look at, from an econometric perspective, if there's a recommendation on, say, producing this amount of affordable housing, what is the economic development benefits for that? So we did pull in a local group to, to assist with that in the form of University of Cincinnati. So that helps in.
And is that included, the fee for UC, is that included?
UC is additional to this. It was a much, it's a, I, I forget what the exact amount is, but it's a contract that already exists and their work is just going to help supplement this. I can provide the board what that amount is. I think it is in the $20,000 range, something like that.
Oh, Madam, Madam President, I'll move forward with what you all think. I just like to have a holistic understanding. One, my understanding is this group will deal with the long term. Am I correct?
That is absolutely correct, yes.
So that means we don't have to do it right today. But I would like to know how much UC, what they would be doing. That just makes me a little more comfortable, not to say I wouldn't move forward with it, but just understanding this is the scope, just like I thought maybe the equity was a part of that, but that's separate. Just trying to get my arms around how much total are we looking at spending from the consulting side of the long-term ARP? So, but I will move forward with, with the wishes of this board is, but I just think it would be helpful for us to have a, a understanding of the total cost, that who's going to do what from a long-range standpoint.
From the chair, I'm, I'm willing to make a motion to table this to our next meeting.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I comment? So I, I think it might be helpful because we're talking about, as we did on Tuesday, two different buckets, short-term, long-term. Is there a list that we could get of, because Jeff just, the administrator just read off the different areas that are the long-term, it's homeless. the administrator just read off the different areas that are the long-term. It's homelessness, it's, um, housing, and some of the other large buckets. Can we get a listing of those? And then a better understanding, because there are big panels being set up locally here to advise per all these different categories. Can you help us understand who, who's going to sit on the panels, or rather, it's the organizations or, you know, they're going to sit on the panel so that we have a, a more comprehensive understanding of what areas are the long-term areas that will be studied? And then the experts at the table will be whom as well. And if, if, I don't know if that's all flushed out yet, but I think it might be helpful for all of us to see that so that we can weigh in and, you know, participate in figuring out who are the best agencies to sit at the table, determined by the different groups.
Yes, Madam President, Commissioner Drehouse. Um, yes, I'd be happy to provide a, a list of all the different organizations that we've thought about from a stakeholder perspective. Um, if that helps with the board's deliberation as well. Um, uh, because again, it's going to, as you indicated, Commissioner, it'll be different for all of these uh, different groups. And again, it's just a wide range of, of topics. Uh, I will say very briefly to get a note that, uh, the, the contract with UC is approximately 15,000. So, uh, in total for this project, you're looking at the 124, 630 plus approximately 15,000, so 139, close to 104.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
With that, can you add, with the equity? Because you said we'd add, we'll also need to have an equity consultant.
We do, uh, that pro- that has not been bid yet.
Okay.
So we won't know that until we get those in. But as soon as we do, we'll, we'll, of course, let the, let the board know.
Okay. Thank, thanks for the discussion. We do have a motion on the table. It's been second.
Can I ask a question related to the motion?
Sure.
Is the motion to delay this contract?
Well, I don't know about delaying the contract, but, um, to postpone it for our next meeting.
So I just need to ask a question related to the timing here. Is there a timing element to this that we need to be aware of?
Uh, only, the timing only from the perspective, uh, commissioners that we, obviously, and I know we share the board's interest of getting started as quickly as possible so we can get recommendations back to the board. But whether we start today, whether we start next week, um, you know, we're, there's, there's nothing from a federal compliance perspective that would say we have to have this done by a certain time. So assuming the board's willing to be flexible with us, we're, it will be flexible, obviously, with the board in terms of, uh, uh, considering the information at the next meeting, because that's, we'd be happy to get you the information you've requested.
Thank you. And as mentioned earlier, these are long-term goals. We are already working on the short-term goal. So we're not really delaying anything, just trying to get more clarification. So could you call the question?
Can I ask, oh, okay, uh, I won't.
Could you call the question?
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Okay, let's move right along to a bylaw two.
Thank you, Commissioner. So bylaw number two, uh, relates, uh, specifically to, uh, the, is also ARPA-related. This is the additional work that's associated with the ARP from an accounting and compliance perspective. As we mentioned early on with the board, when we started, uh, doing the, the ARPA work, that there was going to be some additional, uh, administrative work required, um, with this. Um, this specifically relates to the hiring of, of an accountant position of a, of a, uh, uh, federal, uh, accountant position, uh, to help us, uh, with the, the budgetary and the accounting and financial work associated with the different, um, contractual and billing, uh, work that will be associated with the ARP in addition, uh, to what is anticipated to be, uh, significant, uh, a significant amount more of fiscal compliance work, uh, associated with this grant, which already, we already know will exceed uh, that which come, has come, come in through the CARES Act. I think the CARES Act, as the board knows very well, was a, essentially a year-long program. And I think we saw a little bit of relief. Uh, the silver lining of that was a little bit of relief on it, from the, from the reporting perspective. We are not seeing that with the ARP. I think we're going to continue to see more and more, uh, fiscal compliance work being, uh, required. Uh, so this position will allow, uh, for that work to be undertaken, uh, in a manner that does not, uh, impede the ability of the Budget Office to carry on with their traditional work of, of fund man, of fund monitoring and management, debt issuance, of, uh, departmental budget compliance, et cetera. So, uh, with that, I would recommend approval of Assistant Administrator Brugan is here. If there are any questions specifically, as the position will be reported to him.
Thank you, Jeff. John, did you want to add anything? Okay. Um, any discussion, Vice President Reese?
I just have one question. Um, I know this using the, uh, ARPA money. After, and that runs out in four years, after that, with this position, do we have money to continue? Or is this a temporary four-year position?
Good question, Commissioner. At this point, I think we would, uh, be looking first and foremost, um, we're looking at this as a position that would run through the life of the grant. Um, now, as attrition happens in, within the department over that four years, there's obviously always the opportunity to integrate people in from that perspective. So I can't say specifically about the person, uh, but the job is associated with the federal grant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So this one too, is going to help us accelerate the work um, of getting these dollars out the door. So, um, I'm glad that we're doing it. I'm glad the equity lens is being put on top of all these monies that are going out. So I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. I think it's a great move to keep us accountable as we always are. So, um, I'd like to make a motion to adopt bylaw two.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. No further violence.
Thank you. We have our favorite engineer. Mr. Beck has come up. Thank you so much.
Commissioners.
You have quite a few items.
I have three items today, pretty straightforward. Item number one is a resolution authorizing a second amendment to an agreement between Hamilton County and Warren County for the design of improvements to Fields Erdel Road between Snyder and Wilkins Boulevard. Uh, we've had additional engineering costs due to significant utility delays and some right-of-way work. Um, this would be an additional $100,000 out of, of the Permissive Auto Fund, uh, for the county.
Thank you. And what is our balance on our permissive auto, auto fund right now?
That's a good question. I don't have that on my top of my head, but I can get that for you.
And I know we're doing well in that time, yeah, so.
I can get that balance for you.
Thank you. Uh, any questions, Vice President Reese?
Yes, uh, Mr. Beck, on this, um, I thought we saw something else we did on Fields Erdel. I know that's a long.
Yeah, a few weeks ago, we did one, this was, there's a different section of Fields Erdel. That's where we were doing the repaving and, in, uh, conjunction with, uh, Warren County's resurfacing project. The, the corp, the county line goes down the center of Fields Erdel. That repaving was a different section than this. This, that was left of Snyder. This is Snyder to Wilkins Boulevard.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse? I'd like to ma- make a motion to adopt item one.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item number two is a resolution authorizing an agreement relative to the improvement of Euclid Avenue between the city of Madeira and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners. This is, uh, from the 2020 Municipal Road Fund that was, uh, previously approved in 2020 by the board. Uh, this, this agreement now allows us to transfer $54,000 from the Municipal Permissive Auto Tax Fund to, uh, the city of Madeira so they can do their project. The entire cost of the project is 900,000 and we are, uh, submitting 54,000 to them for.
Right. I like that leverage. Thank you. Uh, any comments? Here and then, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item two.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the last one is item number three, which is a resolution requesting a change to the statutory vehicular speed limit for Plainfield, Plainville Road in Columbia Township from the city of Cincinnati Corp Line south to the village of Marymount Corp Line. Um, the way it works is the, uh, the Ohio Department of Transportation, the director is the one who sets speed limits on all roads in the state of Ohio. A speed study was performed by Columbia Township. They had a consultant do that. It's been reviewed by the engineer's office. And the, the study shows that the speed limit can be reduced from the current 35 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour. Uh, ODOT has recently changed their, their policy. And they are now looking at vulnerable road users, meaning pedestrians and bicyclists. So that's what allows this, uh, to, to meet the warrant for a 25 mile an hour speed limit. This will allow us to submit to the Director of Transportation, request to lower the speed limit, and for the engineer's office to place signs should he approve that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Here and then, I make a motion to adopt item three.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner.
Mm-hmm. Next, we have MSD items. We've already discussed item four.
Again, good afternoon, Commissioners. Item, uh, four, I didn't know if you wanted to take up, uh, any additional questions?
Well, what I'd like to do is a gentleman would like to have a few things to say. Mr. Beck? Yeah. You're in support of the resolution? Okay, well, very good. That says a lot. Thank you for coming. Okay. So why don't we, um, vote on item four? Um, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item four, Muddy Creek.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Item five.
Thank you, Commissioners. For item five, uh, I'd like, um, my future replacement, uh, for representation to your board dealing with legislation to present that, Lauren DiGracia.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Lauren DiGracia with MSD, in office of the director. I have Ryan Welsh with me here today. Uh, MSD Deputy Director and County Sanitary Engineer. I can answer any questions. The purpose of this MSD legislation is to authorize further progress on the CSO 214 Partial Separation Project.
Can you just put your microphone down just a little, even a little, yeah, there you go. Okay, yeah.
Okay, good. I'm having some muffling issues as well.
That's okay.
Um, as I said, specifically approving the detailed plans, specifications, and estimate of costs, declaring the necessity to construct and determination to proceed, and declaring the necessity to appropriate property to public use for sewer purposes. The CSO 214 Partial Separation Project is located in Columbia Township in Hamilton County and is part of the Weather Improvement Plan, or WIP, to be implemented by MSD's, or excuse me, under MSD's federal consent decree. The project will help reduce overflows at the Combined Sewer Outfall, or CSO 214, upon completion. Uh, while MSD is not requesting any funds through this legislation, just for informational purposes, the estimated total cost of this project is $2,273,500. Uh, MSD has been unable to secure all necessary project easements and is therefore requesting the board authorize the appropriation of eight temporary easements, one permanent access easement, as well as three permanent sewer easements from two property owners. MSD further requests that this matter be referred to the Hamilton County Prosecutor to initiate an appropriation action to acquire the necessary easements. Uh, because these easements are necessary for a project, as I said, that's required under a federally imposed consent decree that prohibits future combined sewer overflows, they're eligible for what's referred to as buttake under Ohio law. So in terms of next steps and the, uh, practical effect of this legislation, uh, the adoption of these resolutions would allow appropriation actions to commence uh, upon which the fair market value of these easements would be deposited with the clerk of courts. And at that point in time, MSD would have the ability to enter upon the property and occupy it as needed for these, um, for this project. So with that, MSD requests, um, uh, approval of this legislation and take any questions that the board may have.
Thank you so much. Um, are there any questions, Vice President Reese? Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes. Question. So what, what are the nature of the easements? I mean, by that, I mean, how intrusive will they be onto the private profit, property?
Um, Ryan might be able to give you more details about the project itself, but, um, as I said, there are temporary easements. Those are generally used for construction purposes, meaning they need them when the construction is actually active and taking place. Um, one permanent access easement, meaning MSD needs it to access our infrastructure for future maintenance and operation, repairs, things of that nature. Um, and when I say three permanent sewer easements, that's actually where the infrastructure is going to be located and we're, you know, permanently occupying it.
Okay.
Do you have any more?
I'm not sure I have anything to add. I think Lauren explained that pretty well, but are there any specific questions?
How, how many private properties are impacted here?
Uh, two.
Okay. And, and the property owners have been contacted and they, uh, tell me how that went.
So.
Well, I will say, um, we have a talented right-of-way group that does, uh, reach an agreement with the vast majority of these property owners. We only bring them to the board for approval to appropriate when those negotiations have, um, you know, broken down, or they're just taking too long and we need to, um, progress this project because of our timeline. Um, so I, I can't speak to the specific legal negotiations between our council and theirs, but generally it's, um, you know, cost, uh, conditions, or, you know, the occasional, we just don't want this here in our yard, so.
I'm still, I, forgive me, I'm still unclear. So are the, um, private property owners, is that, that relative to the temporary easements?
Uh, all of them. I mean, they would be, they would enter into these negotiations and discussions with them on all of the, um, necessary easements.
Okay. One more. Give me one more. So I, I'm still unclear. Um, so I own a piece of private property. MSD wants to have a temporary easement to construct a project. Get that. Um, I understand also that there are some permanent things that have to happen because the project will then be in place. So if I'm the private property owner, uh, and I am evidently disagreed with this, um, I'm still not entirely clear on the impact, that the permanent, I guess, impact to a property owner. And I'm kind of getting to, why are they objecting to it?
Um, and again, um, I don't know the specific objections that these property owners have. But again, it's usually, they want more money, feel that it's more valuable, and are asking for more money. It may be the conditions they're requesting, you know, we have property owners. I don't want that tree taken out or something, um, to that effect. And then, like I said, there are those owners who really just don't want the infrastructure, um, located on their property and will fight it till the end.
Did you want to clarify?
I just, uh, excuse me, uh, just for your, uh, further clarification, based upon what Lauren, uh, was offering to, um, because these negotiations are considered private, um, we don't have specifics within the legislation as to the reasons why that's related to, uh, discussions between the, eventually, the prosecutor and the property owner, if your board approves this. But if your board wants to take this matter under advisement and into an executive session, I believe that might be a further appropriate action, uh, to take. But I'd leave that, offer that as a suggestion, leave that to the prosecutor as well as, uh, the administrator.
Okay. Yeah, so I, yeah, I, I just, I think the reason I'm looking for detail I don't have is because I'm not allowed to have it. Right? Uh, because I feel like I'm a little, at a little bit of a loss on this one because I don't have as much information as usual. Um, so I'm not, not necessarily quibbling with this action, rather just trying to get information as, by way of background. Um, so if, so what you're saying then is that this matter is going to go to the prosecutor if we approve of the item? And then the details of the negotiation will be hashed out between prosecutor and property owner.
That's correct. I was just going to add that, um, because this is a consent decree process, project.
Ryan, can you speak up just a little or bring your microphone up?
Yeah, uh-huh. Because this is a consent decree project, it's not discretionary. We have to do it. And there is no other path for the sewer to go in. So we don't have the alternative of finding another property, adjacent property, or a different property owner that might be more minimal to it. This is where the, the sewer has to go and we, we really don't have a choice. So that's, I just want to assure you that our design has looked for alternatives and there, there aren't any.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and that's what I was going to say too, when I heard you say about three permanent sewers. And so you, sometimes with the decree also, you have to look at the greater good for that, for that area. So, um, Karen, did you, uh, want to say anything? Karen Baller, MSD person, or not? No? Okay. Vice President Reese? Okay.
Oh, Madam President, I just would like to get maybe an email sent to, um, our office or offices if others want it, do what you just said. So that when our office gets calls, our chief of staff, et cetera, we can just forward them what you just said. Because the consent decree, we tried everything and this was the only way. So if someone can get that, um, that would help us. As, we'll have a lot of people calling our staff about, possibly, about this. We're able to just, I don't want to interpret it. I don't want to say it incorrectly. I want to be able to hit forward. And this is what you just said.
For your reference, these are commercial properties, uh.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That sometimes makes a difference.
Well, anybody that calls, I like to hit that button and then. It's what anybody that calls, I like to hit that button, and it's said correctly, especially if there might be some legal situation. I want to be able to hit send, and it is exactly what you said.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. With no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution, item five.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate it. You have before you some consent agenda items. And I will open it up for any discussion as it relates to any of the items before I enumerate the ones we need to receive for record and the ones we need to adopt. So Vice President Reese, were there any that you want to speak to? I know we already.
Yes, Madam President, I know this is consenting from the auditor, the resolution authorizing use of credit cards. But I just want to put on the table, I've gotten some calls of people asking, do we accept credit card payments? And so I didn't know. Maybe that's something to look into. Do we do all of them, MasterCard, Visa, and everybody else? Okay, good. I'm glad you answered that question because I got a lot of questions and I didn't know the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional ones you were concerned that we talked about disparity?
Vice President. I'm sorry, just on that point, I'd be happy to follow up with an email indicating specifically which departments we have. If we clerk of courts, the building department, engineers' office, et cetera, treasurer's office to have credit card payment options. So I can get that to the board to see if they have that full listing of departments.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse, any items of concern or comments?
The only thing I had highlighted was seven, and including MSD in the disparity study. So I wanted to, I was just going to note that, thank goodness, we just, again, are approving a whole bunch of projects with a lot of very high-dollar amounts. And I'm delighted that MSD is included in this disparity study for the county.
Okay, thank you. So you have before you to receive for the record, items six, 13, 14, and 15. I'd like to make a motion to receive those items for the record.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And for adoption, I'd like to make a motion to adopt items seven through 12.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Before we close and adjourn, I'd like to make sure that my colleagues do not have any additional comments. Vice President Reese? Commissioner Dreehouse?
Well, I was going to ask this earlier, so I guess I'll ask it now. So the first bylaw that we held, do we have a time that we expect to have that back in front of us?
Our next regular meeting Thursday.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you very much.